Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, January 7th, 2015 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky. Please all rise for a moment of silent meditation and the pledge of allegiance.
Mr. President, I would that we remember those in our community that are less fortunate than we are in any and every way, locally and globally. Ask that we remember those who have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers. And finally, we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper knowledge and information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie as we move into this new year.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the meeting of December 17th, 2014, and the bills for payment of January 9th and 16th of 2015. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. A resolution sponsored by Councilman President Melvin Witherspoon and seconded by Councilman Bob Mursky nominating Councilman David Brennan as City Council President for 2015. Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, and Mr. Witherspoon.
You get to vote twice.
Mr. President?
Well, Mr. Witherspoon, I want to present with a plaque. We appreciate your service as the leader of council. You set an excellent example for all of us, and I think you're a great team of service officers. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
I guess first item on the agenda is the request for a repository sales. Do we have any requests for a repository sales today? Any requests for a repository sales? If there is none, we'll have the citizens to be heard, and I believe we do. I don't have the agenda in front of me. We do have our...
I'm sure we have at least one.
Is Mr. Randy Barnes here for the first speaker for citizens to be heard?
Happy New Year, Council. Greetings. Congratulations, President Brennan. My name is Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point. And I want to first take a moment, and I wish there was more people to help me out, but maybe Mr. McDonald will. I'd want to give the council a round of applause. And that is deserved for the exemplary work on the budget and the ability to create positions. At least one position was created that wasn't there a year ago. A year ago, I stood before, and we had no archivist. But in the new budget, you were able to find the funds to fund an archivist, so we have an additional cost of $12,000 a year to the taxpayers that we didn't have in last year's budget. It's come to my attention, and I've got to change my subject. My subject needs to be, what is $81,732 on all the free coffee you can drink? Well, $12,000 of that, of course, we know is that money you found and raised the taxes so you could pay an archivist that we didn't have last year. $69,732 is a pension a person gets after working 48 years. And all the free coffee is, well, maybe the public doesn't know, but a coffee stand is run out of the clerk's office here. So I invite anyone, come on down and have a cup. But remember, you have to come during business hours, and there's no service on holidays or weekends of the coffee. Does the police department get taxpayer coffee? No. Why would we want to give them taxpayer coffee? We pay them. Does the treasurer's office get taxpayer coffee? Well, only if they walk across the hall and get a cup. Does the archivist get taxpayer coffee? Of course. How did it, that the city clerk, we know that two years ago, the city clerk said he wanted to retire, and the incoming council president said, "No, please stay another year," so he stayed another year. Well, how is it that the four people, and let me read from the official record, the four people that voted for this archivist position, Haran Kunco, Jones, Winarsky, and Witherspoon, the four council people that have the most amount of experience, did you feel threatened a year ago when you found out the clerk was going to be retiring? Did the clerk say, "You know, I'm going to retire, and I'm not going to train the incoming person, and I'm not going to answer any phone calls or give any advice the day I leave here unless you pay me"? Did the four of you council people with the most experience, did you feel threatened? Did you feel threatened that you wouldn't be able to function down here because this person had worked here for 48 years? Put the scare into you, you know, hey, the records are a mess. The new clerk will never be able to find any of these records, the documents, they're a mess. And I'm not going to train the incoming person, and I'm not going to answer my phone because that's my right. I retired, I can take my pension, and I don't have to answer the phone, I don't have to give you any advice, any help whatsoever unless you pay me. If you pay me, and what is, what is, at first, it was going to be, let me see from the memo from Witherspoon, it says, "A small compensation." Mr. Witherspoon, on February, March 7th, 2014, said, "For a small compensation." Well, how did we arrive at $1,000? You know what $1,000 is? Go work a minimum wage job and see how much you collect at the end of the month. About $1,000 is what you take home. So I don't know where we get, I don't know if the council is in another world, or in another cloud, or in another universe, that they have this right to think small compensation because we have this important transition. Let me ask this, and you probably know the answer. How many, how much time is there a transition between the November election, when a new President of the United States is elected, and the January inauguration? I don't know, about two and a half months? So we have about a two and a half month transition when a new President of the United States, the largest, most powerful world country in the world, we have about a two-month transition. But yet, when we have a city clerk retiring that's known, we've known for a year, remember, he wanted to retire two years ago, and we asked him to stay on, we've known for two years this man's retiring, we as council did not prepare for that retirement. Because we as council, four members of council voted, and then again, that was Haran Kunco, Jones, Winarsky, and Witherspoon voted that we just can't make it. This man's not going to train the new person coming in, he's not going to give us any advice the day he leaves, he's not going to answer his phone. We need to give him a compensation package so we can get through this, and we need to raise taxes to do it. Why not? And we get all the free coffee we want to drink. That's the kicker there. Got to love that free coffee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Are there any other citizens to be heard?
My name is McDonald. My property is 19th and Reed. I want to talk to you about this cop that hit the fire truck. Who investigated this? I glanced at the paper, they had somebody else, they didn't even name who ever investigated I don't think the police should investigate their own. I think they should have an outside organization investigating them because I don't know, I don't put too much confidence in internal affairs. Police are not going to, I was surprised that they brought this guy forward. I guess the police, they're on a higher level than the taxpayers. They're above being scrutinized. It's not right. I've told you many times, a trillion wrongs don't make one right. Joe don't seem to think that the police should, you know, be treated like regular peoples or the chief. I want you to know that the police ain't no better than nobody else, and ain't good as a lot of them. You got some good cops out there, and you got some that shouldn't even be on the force. I'm telling you what I know. You got some good ones out there, but it's just like a bad apple in the barrel or in the bushel. That one bad apple will make all the rest of them, you know, rot. I think you should look into that. And I still say we should have beat cops, have them out there walking. They ain't too good to walk. We're buying the shoes. We're buying everything they have on. So why can't they, why can't we have beat cops? You're not going to solve a lot of your problems until you get them. Because when I was coming up, the cops would stop and talk to you. Now, kids tell me the cops curse them out. Respect the man you respect, just because those are kids, they got to be respected. Those are our future leaders. And, Lord, have mercy on us, if some of them I've seen out there, of course, what we got ain't no, nothing to write home to mother about. We, we got to do better, we deserve better. Your taxes, they got these buildings down here on the Bayfront, they don't want to, they're not taxing them, now they building another one, they're not going to tax them. If those places don't pay taxes, those taxes are on the back of the property owners, and it's not right. It's not right. I don't care what nobody say, it is not right. And if you all can't see no further than that, you don't have no business up there, none of you. Putting every, every tax, 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 that garbage thing, you want to make sure that you get that money, you don't care where you get it from, but you want that money. We got to pay this, we got to pay that. You keep on taxing, you will not going to have nobody with no property. And when them foreigners come in here, you give them everything. Our soldiers come in here, you kick them in the butt, up one side and down the other. It's not right, but I promise you this, it's going to come across you later on down the road, and you're going to be wondering, "Why me, God?", and he going to tell you, "Why not you? Look what you did." They've been beating our President up ever since he been in, before he got in. The Bible says we're supposed to lift our leaders up. We try to lift y'all up, but y'all are not up there for us. You're up there for the administration. You're not did, you haven't did anything for the taxpayer. What have you did? Nothing but raise taxes on them. That's putting them in a stranglehold. I know y'all going to like what I'm saying, but I don't care. I'm a taxpayer, and I have freedom of speech and don't ever forget it. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Is there anyone else, citizens, any other citizens to be heard? It seems like that's it for the citizens to be heard. Do we want to move on to the rest of the meeting? Ruth?
Okay, we're going to ordinance for final passage. Council File Number 15903, Official Ordinance Number 1-2015. An ordinance repealing Official File Ordinance 44-209, 2009, Codified Ordinance of the City of Erie, Part 7, General Offenses Code, by repealing Article 739, Lost or Stolen Handguns in its entirety in accordance with Act 192 of 2014. By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Brennan, that Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15903, and now known as the Official File Ordinance Number 1-2015, be finally passed by the City Council. Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City Council read and adopt Final Council File Ordinance 15903 by seven yeas, zero Council File 15904, Official Ordinance 2-2015, and ordinance amending Official File Ordinance Number 531976, Part 9, Streets, Utilities, and Public Services Code. Article 955, Parks and Playground Areas. Section 95506, Recreational Activities. Subsection 95506B, Hunting and Firearms, by deleting reference to carrying and possessing firearms in park areas in accordance with Act 192 of 2014. By Mr. Mursky, seconded by Mr. Brennan, that Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15904, and now known as Official Ordinance Number 2-2015, be finally passed by the City Council. Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 2-2015 by yeas, seven nays, zero. An ordinance for first reading. Council File Number 15905, An Ordinance Approving the Editing and Inclusion of Certain Ordinances as Parts of the Various Components Code of the Codified Ordinances of Erie, Pennsylvania. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Winarsky. That Council File Ordinance Number 15905, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 15905 by yeas, seven nays, zero. That's it of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a balance to move, or motion to move the balance of the agenda.
Second.
We have a second? Mr. Witherspoon? Do we have any separations? Any separations?
Mr. President, I'd like to moment to separate number five and six, just for comment.
Number five and six in new business, okay?
Yes, thank you.
So five and six in new business is separated.
Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr.
We want to go to item five first for discussion?
Yeah, we could probably just discuss both.
Okay, so five and six, get a discussion on both, both items.
Would you please?
Okay.
By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Winarsky. That the mayor and other appropriate city officials are hereby authorized to amend the agreement between the City of Erie and the Hands pertaining to the Acquisition Rehab Rental Program, Goodrich House. The amendment will increase the contract amount by 159, 108,000 from 237,465 to 396,573.
Just for sake of comment, and again, we can just vote on them both together without reading the second one, just wanted to, more or less, and I guess I could have done it in a different venue, but since we're in the voting process, wanted to thank Chuck Scalise, Matthew Good, and the staff at Hands for the work that they've done with our Economic Development Department in the city and multiple other agencies and groups, state and federal, to be able to provide the increased level of housing for some of our residents of low to moderate income. I mean, this is what they've always done in my tenure on council and done that well. But this next project is relation, in relation to helping our veterans and their families to find affordable and quality housing in our community. And so I thought it would be appropriate, and I thought it important to have a separate conversation and thank you to them and for their effort, but also take this moment to, if there are citizens who are watching or hear about this program, I mean, I would imagine they can contact the Hands Office and inquire on the criteria for applying for some of this housing that is coming up and will be available very soon, in the next year or two at the longest, probably. So again, just want to take an opportunity in the course of this session to thank them as well as Mel and their, excuse me, Economic Development Office of the City of Erie and all the administration may have done to be a part of that as well, and let citizens know who may be interested, or not just veterans, but veterans' families are also available to apply and to inquire on the process of being able to rent one of these affordable housing units. So again, thank you to them, and that's my comment on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is there any more comments in five and six?
Yes, Mr. President, since we have Mr. Scalise here, would you mind coming up and just presenting what this resolution is about? In that way, it'll give more information for the general public as well as our vets.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of council, thank you for the invitation to speak this morning. I'm Chuck Scalise. My business office is 77th Street, across the street, and with Housing and Neighborhood Development Service, a nonprofit developer here based in Erie. I want to thank you for your consideration in our request to partially fund our Freedom Square and our Goodrich House projects. As Mr. Jones articulated very correctly, the housing community will be available for homeless veterans and their families. We expect to begin our construction in February, and we'll have about a 12-month construction season, weather depending, of course. And we expect to open late this year or early next and to offer a one, a combination of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments for veterans and their families. Location is the former Golden Living Center at 2686 Peach Street, and it's also our hope that the investment by the city will also, and by Hands, will also help the, instill some additional good feeling in the neighborhood. Peach Street, of course, is a gate, one of the gateways into our downtown, and we're hoping that through our redevelopment of that area, that additional resources will be identified, and other property owners will continue to improve that part of our city. Mr. Jones correctly stated that we will be accepting applications in the not-too-distant future, and citizens who are interested in applying for our housing, or citizens who are interested in helping by means of donations and volunteer hours, we're also trying to work out a way to develop some volunteer programs. We've received very fine presentations from the Times News and some of the local media, and we've had a number of people come forward and wanting to help our veterans. We feel privileged that we have an opportunity to honor the men and women and their families who have served us so well and have come home to our city, and we're hoping that this housing community will help folks reacquaint themselves in civilian life and to be welcomed back to our community. So again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for the city's fine work in helping us carry out some important neighborhood development activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scalise. Thank you for not just this project, but I know your past work, and there's been, you know, years and years of Hands working in the city and the region, so thank you for all your dedication and work in the city. Thank you.
Our pleasure. We're here for the long run, and we want to continue serving the city and serving, serving our residents as well as our other neighborhoods and communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on five and six, so then we'll go to vote on these two items? No comments, we'll go to vote then, Ruth?
Okay. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. This here on both of them? Mr. Brennan, do you want me to read the next one?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay. The mayor, that the mayor and the appropriate city officials are here...
No, Ms., you don't have to read it. You don't legally have to read it, right? We can just vote on it?
Vote on it, yes.
Just vote, we don't need to read it, Ruth.
Okay.
Just roll call on it.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Brennan?
Make it as hard as possible.
Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. That takes us to, we have waive the rules. We need to vote on the waive rules. Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. A resolution that Mr. Paul D. Gamble of 2303 Holland Street, this is, I'm sorry, this is by Mr. Witherspoon and seconded by Mr. Jones. That Mr. Paul D. Gamble of 2303 Holland Street, Erie, PA, 16503, be appointed to the Erie City Water Authority whose term expires December 31st, 2020. Mr. Gamble replaces board member Nettie Smith, who chose to serve only one five-year term. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. President, that takes us to committee reports.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Regarding that appointment, is that term right? Because that sounds like a six-year term. Shouldn't it be five?
Do you want to reread that, Ruth?
Is it 20?
Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen?
Is that five?
Nineteen. Well, you said it expires 2020, that's six.
Does it expire 20, like January 2020?
Oh, January 2020.
It says December 31st, 2020.
That'd be six years. It's probably supposed to expire January 1st of 2020. I think that's when those water ones expire. Will you check the term on that? It's not mine, but I don't think it's right.
It's probably 19, December 31st, 19, and then you start fresh in January of 2020.
Change and then vote on it after we make the change.
Yeah.
There should be a, we could probably get a list.
Date is right now, so we could make the change and vote on it, right?
December 31st, Lauren?
It should be 19, 2019.
Right.
Okay.
Can we make the change?
I don't want to make anybody serve six years when they only want to serve five. I mean, geez, he's going to get a raw deal.
So we want to make that change and then have a revote right now, just to make sure we're reading the right exact description?
Read it as corrected or something.
Yeah, read it as corrected and vote as corrected.
All right. Wait, by Mr. Witherspoon.
Just vote on, you can amend it. Just vote on it as amended.
I'd like to...
I'd like to propose amendment to that resolution to change the end date to twenty-nineteen instead of twenty-twenty, but I need a second on my amendment.
We have a second on the.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we'll second that.
Yeah, we second that.
Thanks a lot. Team, team.
Team second.
So we have a second on that, we want to vote on that now?
Yes, no, I thought I'd pay attention.
Yes, please just reread just for clarification.
All right. By Mr. Witherspoon, by Mr. Jones, amended that Mr. Paul D. Gamble of Twenty-Three Oh Three Holland Street, Erie PA, One Six Five Oh Three, be appointed to the Erie City Water Authority whose term expires December Thirty-First, twenty-nineteen. Mr. Gamble replaces board member Nettie Smith, who chose to serve only one five-year term. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Haran Kunsow, Mr. Jones, Mr. Potowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. And that brings us to committee reports.
Okay, let's start with Ms. Kunsow. Do you want to first? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome aboard, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Welcome to the new position. I know that you will do well. I always appreciate your thoroughness and hard work on council, so I look forward to serving this year with you in that seat. Besides, that other guy that was in your seat was kind of mean to me, so I have expectation that you'll be much nicer to me than the last council president.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things. We are awaiting our new committee assignments, so we don't have any liaison assignments to report on today, but since we're talking about appointments, we are making those appointments today, I just wanted to make a note of thanks to the folks that we do appoint in these positions. We have the opportunity to appoint people to boards and authorities to serve approximately five-year terms, and these people are volunteers that are serving at the request of council, and these positions are unpaid, and they are usually, take up a lot of time for research and attending meetings, and this is sort of like a civic contribution that citizens are giving to our city and to our region to serve on these boards and authorities. I did have three folks that were served at my request, and their terms have expired at the end of fourteen, and I'd just like to thank them individually. Lisa Austin, who served two terms on the zoning hearing board, I'd like to thank her for her service to the city and to the zoning process for the City of Erie. That is a very important position, awarding variances and hearing appeals to the zoning code, so I appreciate her service. Also, Mary Chang, who served on our Airport Authority, has completed her five-year term and also is not interested in serving again, not able to serve again. They do have the opportunity to serve two terms, but I do appreciate any service that our appointees give. Mary served very diligently on the airport, really got engaged in the issues of the Airport Authority, and is hoping to enjoy some retirement going forward, so I appreciate her. Also, Marcela Polanski, who served on the sewer authority, the Erie City Sewer Authority. I know that she was well-received as a member of that board and will be missed, and I do appreciate her service as well. So I just want to make sure, we thank those that do this civic volunteerism for us, and we appreciate them and look forward to finding those who would like to serve in the future. Please be in touch with us if you have some interest in serving on one of these boards or authorities as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kunsow. And Mr. Potowski?
Yes, real quick report. I attended the Airport Authority meeting before the close of the year. It was a very good meeting, it's a very well-run authority, and are working hard to secure flights to other locations. They brought up the New York market, you know, New York City area, further service to the south and maybe possibly regions such as Charlotte, and they experimented this year with a holiday flight to Atlanta for Delta. It'd be interesting to see what the numbers come in on that, but I think, you know, a lot of the public misunderstands why we did the runway. You know, it wasn't just about bringing bigger aircraft, it was about the safety factor. On a day like today or yesterday, you understand it if you fly a lot, that's nice to have an extra runway space. And they announced that they're pretty close now to ending the runway extension project officially. They have a little bit more to go and get clearances, and so that project's going around good. And finally, I'd like to thank members of council for supporting the ordinance on, I mean, the resolution for the Hands project with the veterans. On behalf of the veterans' community, we can't do enough for those people, men and women, that have gone away. Sometimes the separation from service is a lot harsher than the service itself. We send them off to do things that most of us wouldn't want to do, so it's nice when we do something for them when they come back home and they're in a transition process. After previous wars, a lot of times we forgot about them. We'd see them walk in the streets, live in the subways, laying on top of grates, so it's nice that at least in Erie, we're doing something for them. So on behalf of the veterans' community, thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Potowski. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
I think. Tell me this time next year if you enjoy the job, but seriously, I'm sure you'll do extremely well in facilitating these meetings and taking a leadership role amongst this group. I'd like to thank our just stepped-down Mr. President, Melvin Witherspoon, who not only has, or had, a great hookshot and jumpshot, but he continues to be a great leader and a great friend to this community, so we want to thank you for your service as president in the former year, past year. Just again, looking forward to hopefully being reassigned to some liaison positions and possibly assigned to some new and fresh areas of service for the year 2015. Look forward to working pretty and a lot more closely as a liaison to my assignments for the year 2015. Just a couple of things that I'm really interested in this year, I guess my own goals as a part of this body, of course, to do everything that is necessary to fulfill this assignment. As a council member, I look forward to working with this council, administration, and anyone interested throughout the community to really find some new and creative and sustainable revenue sources. That's really the biggest, one of the biggest, I think, concerns that we have on our plate as a body, as municipal leaders in Erie. We always know that, you know, you can't tax people too much, but that's the main source that municipalities can, or government entities can gain revenue, but I think we're intelligent enough to continue to find and keep working towards some new ideas for revenue to alleviate some of that burden from our citizens as much as possible. So I look forward to being a part of that in a very deliberate, in a very focused way. Look forward to, again, working with this council, the administration, and members in the, in the community, excuse me, towards trying to find some, you know, answers. I guess there's no one answer, there's multiple series of answers, there's multiple pieces to the puzzle of solving some of our social and community issues, violence, poverty, whatever it might be. I know sometimes we hear those things, and it's like so, such a huge, large, daunting task to say we want to help and do something around poverty, or do something with violence when the level of violence in our community is increasing, but sometimes you just have to break it down, and like each one teach one, like keep it really simple, because if you look at it, look at it from too large of a macro view, it's like, oh my God, this isn't, you can't do anything with it. But every time that an adult or someone mentors, or someone does something good, or says hello to a young person that they don't know, and lets them know, hey, somebody's watching, somebody sees you, you mean something, it means something to be said hello to from a stranger, even if they don't acknowledge it. At least they know that somebody's acknowledging them in the world, and that's really important, not just young people, but every person appreciates that. So I look forward to really working with whoever's interested in being a part of these community solutions, because the answers don't come from legislative bodies or political figures, they come from a collective intelligence of a community, because the answers are in the community, and so I look forward to being a part of that. Also, there's one thing that I've been really thinking about for the last couple of years, I want to really, I'm interested in looking into, we have three taxing entities in the county, we have a county council, city council, of course, and the Erie School Board. I've been on council, I'm starting my tenth year, and we have never sat down together. All three entities have never sat down together in any collective way. We did some things separately with the school board when they needed some help, and we needed some help, we're working on some things with Lardus some years ago. We sat with the county when we're dealing with the regional airport authority and all those things in the last several years, but we haven't sat down just to kind of, even if it was just a brainstorming session quarterly around, wait a minute, you're raising taxes, we're raising taxes, we're all raising taxes, and it's the same people we're taxing and raising taxes on, and so our seven percent isn't a whole lot, but you add our seven percent to their ten percent, and then someone else's five percent, that adds up really fast for our citizens. And so I think the collective, again, intelligence of these elected bodies needs to be brought together, and so respectfully asking and talking to our president around, you know, working with the other presidents and the other bodies of legislators in our county and our area to figure out how that would work and what that would mean if we were to do it. So those are kind of my priorities for the year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Right up to the five-minute mark.
Right on the dot. Mr. Winarsky?
Thank you, Mr. President, and just like Mr. Curtis Jones said, congratulations. Look forward to a great year here on council. Once again, we got some challenges in front of us, but I don't think as a council, it's nothing we can accomplish as long as we work together and do our homework and do our job. There's things we can definitely, definitely accomplish, and congratulations. To my new neighbor on my right, a great year. Just keep quiet, or I'll have to call somebody on you. You know, I might have to press that button under here, but naturally, it's going to be a new year, different liaisons possibly, some may be the same from this past year. I just want to thank the EMTA, very transparent and big addition and deal going on over there on Parade Street, expansion project that I've been involved with for the last couple of years. Erie Housing Authority, although it's been very, very tough for me to make those meetings as they're in the middle of my workday, very, very transparent and get me any information I needed and kept me well-informed. It's a well-run organization over there, and I appreciate the job Mr. Haran's doing there. We have John Bookman in the audience tonight, or this morning, and Downtown Partnership, I've been down there many a times for different events, and a great job is being done, and look forward once again to another great year, and I appreciate the job you are doing. Naturally, once again, what Curtis said, with our finances and we have our, naturally, our monthly finance meetings, we are going to be due diligence, do our due diligence and look for what additional revenues we can possibly get other than on the backs of the taxpayers. We will do that. Can we promise you we're going to find millions? No, but we will do our homework to see what we can do to help our city funds. It's tough here in Erie, and it's tough in the state, and it's tough in the nation, so it's not an easy task, but as a team, we can hopefully, like I said, do our due diligence and see what we can find. Other than that, once again, everybody, Happy New Year. Look forward to a new year here on council, and thanks for all your support.
Thank you, Mr. Winarsky. Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you, Mr. President, and congratulations, and without a doubt, I'm sure you do an outstanding job in your role as leader of this council. I've received several calls on the pothole situation, especially at Elwood Avenue area, Forty-Second and Melrose. I did get a report from Chuck Sis, is it Sistic?
Sis.
Sis. And he reported that they are aware of it, but one of the problems is that part of that stretch is concrete, and they will lay out some blacktop over it, and of course, during the wintertime, it's very difficult to fill that in, and when you put cold patch there, as the cars roll over it, we lose some, but the administration is aware of it, and they will keep an eye on it. Also received a call from a lady, let's just say Christine, and she has communicated with one of the other council folks on the billing of the Water Authority. Some folks are getting three bills, all three bills, at the same time, and I did speak with Paul, and all they have to do is call down, and arrangements will be made to make their payments easier. It's going to take them some time, it's going to take us some time to smooth this out, and we get where it's easy for those to pay instead of getting a bill with all three within a month. So it will be worked out, I am sure. I have a lot of confidence in Mr. Wojcik, for sure. And again, hitchhiking on Jim, John, good to see you here this morning, and he and I have worked together many, many years, and he does an outstanding job, and his concern for the city is genuine. I want to thank council for the support in the last year, as I sat in the chair. I think at least six of us gave me a hundred and ten percent support. Jessica gave me ninety-eight, but I'll take the ninety-eight. Only kidding, Jessica. She'll pay me back, I'm sure. But anyway, the, it's been a good year. One thing I just want to close in saying that when you sit in the chair as president, many citizens automatically feel, well, you're the president, you have all the answers. It doesn't work that way, that's why we have seven folks up here. That's why the President of the United States have a cabinet, he don't have all the answers, and neither would President Brennan, and that's why we work as a team. The decisions we make, we make those decisions based on citywide, and sometimes those decisions doesn't have a positive effect on one particular group of people or one particular neighborhood. We have to consider the entire city all the time in our decisions. You're going to like some of our decisions, you're not going to like some. That's the way it is, but we do the best we can with what we have. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Mersky?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to congratulate you on the presidency for 2015, and also thank Mr. Witherspoon for his service to the city as council president last year, and his continued service as city councilman. A couple of things to report. I want to thank the Erie firefighters for their Operation Warm Coat event that they held yesterday, passing out coats, brand-new coats to needy families, needy children in the City of Erie, a job well-done by the Erie firefighters, off-duty, but again, giving back to the community. From the Streets Department, plows are out, please be patient with the plows, and we've tried to do the main drags first and then do the outlying areas in the evening. Please shovel your sidewalks and help the elderly and the homebound with shoveling their sidewalks. And just a request from the Fire Department, please keep the fire hydrants clear of all snow, so that in the event of a fire, you've seen in the last couple of days, there's been fires from space heaters, that they have access to those fire hydrants. It's very critical in stopping those fires in a timely fashion. And finally, I just want to report, yesterday we started the, we launched the East Avenue Task Force. The East Avenue Task Force is a group of business owners and elected officials, government officials, working together to improve the East Avenue Business District. The area has been in transition for a number of years now, with the closing of American Meter, with the closing of Hammer Mill, the closing of the East Avenue Bridge. That area has seen transition, and it's a struggling area right now, and we would like to work together, government and business owners, to develop creative ideas to enhance and to support that business district. Erie's only as strong as its neighborhoods, and I'm very excited. Erie's only as strong as its neighborhoods, and I'm very excited that Clancy's owners have stepped on board, New York Lunch, these are east-side institutions stepping forward to handle their own problems, working with us, and also Razanaska's Funeral Home and others are stepping on board as they see this initiative grow. We're very excited, we have a lot of work in front of us, but we're looking to make those recommendations to improve that area, the east-side business district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Worsky. Ms. Controller, do we have a report for the new year?
We do. We had a lot of changes going on, so just to keep everyone up to date on the pension boards. The transition for the aggregate board to the new custodian KeyBank took effect January, and we also added Rice Hall James and Atlantic Capital to our managers beginning January also, so we're looking forward to working with them. And the process that we had with KeyBank with transferring all our assets and having our first pensioner checks be issued by KeyBank went smoothly, from what we can tell, so there's been no problems with that. And we are going to be interviewing possibly new managers for the emerging markets and our international equity in January, and then by our February meeting, we'll have a decision as to whether or not, who's going to be coming on board with us. So our next investment committee meeting will be in February 16th, and the aggregate board will meet on February 17th. So that's where everything is right now.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. Ms. Beck, any report from the administration today?
Of course, very briefly, Happy New Year to everyone. Congratulations to you, Council President Brennan. Mr. Witherspoon, it was a pleasure working with you in 2014, and everybody on council. Looking forward to a productive 2015. Winter is definitely upon us as we look outside and look at the temperatures, not only the snow, the cold temperatures, lots of homes are using alternative heating instead of turning up their furnace. Just need everybody to know that National Fuel has a low-income home energy assistance program, it's called LIHEP. A family of four who has a gross annual income of $35,775 qualifies for grant funding through National Fuel. Contact them, stop in their office, give them a call, the information will be up on the city's website as well. But it's important that we're safe, we're keeping our families safe, that we're not heating our homes with stoves as we often hear about in communities such as this. So reach out to National Fuel, there is funding available, and it's a great program. One final thing, the 2015 Single Stream Recycling Guide is out and available, all kinds of important dates regarding tire, Civil Tire Collection Day, the Electronic Recycling Drop-Off Day, talks about leaf pickup, Christmas tree pickup. This should have been delivered to everybody, it is also available on the website, brochures are available here in City Hall and, again, on the website. So lots of important information. It is printed through a grant that we receive from our recycling proceeds, from the benefits that the city receives from recycling. So keep doing a great job, we make it very easy for citizens to recycle. That's all, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Beck. I do have some final comments here, want to kind of go through a couple of things real quick here. Again, I want to thank Mr. Witherspoon for his service on council. Thank you so much for your leadership. As council president for 2015, I would like to ask each council member to continue to focus on the issues that affect our city and also any new initiatives that will help our city continue to move positively forward. I'd also like to ask each council member to continue to work together as a team and continue to work with the administration and also every city employee. From past experience, I know that communicating on the many issues that come before us is not an easy task, but as everyone knows, if you're not, if we're not rolling a boat in the same direction, we're never going to get anywhere. In support of continued communication, I'd like to ask the mayor to meet with me monthly to review issues that come before council, and also any other issues, any other relevant issues that comes up so we can all keep on board with our communication. I think this, through these monthly meetings, we'll be able to improve our communications with administration and also our citizens. Based on council discussions throughout this past year, I have put together a preliminary list of goals for the upcoming year 2015. I'll be forwarding this list to all the members of council for input and to review together to discuss and then finalize. I know there's been several goals mentioned during their comments that are meeting today, and they'll be brought up and discussed. But in closing, I do want to thank my fellow colleagues on council for continuing to work, your support and your passion in the service of our city. Thank you so much. Ruth? Any other comments? Ruth's report. Ruth's report.
I have no reports.
Okay, thank you. Adjourn, meeting adjourned?
We need a motion, David. We need a motion?
City Council adjournment at 10 o'clock.
You can motion, Karen.
Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwetowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.
Should we say you want to?